So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to our session to our candidate forum for the Board of Elections, which is a conference starting at one o'clock. Before I begin, I would like to welcome the Loca and Kappa presidents to come forward and give an opening remarks. So please have, first, our Kappa president, Ms. Jean, come forward and she will give her opening remarks.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Is it better? Let's try again. Hello. That's much better. So my name is Jean Shu and I'm the president of Chinese American Education Association. So showing up to your BOE forum means a lot. Means you are a very engaged citizen. You do care about education of our county and you want to be a form of the voter. So for that, I'm very thankful for all of you coming to our event. And I would like to say thank you to Paye Chinese School, Paye County, for your support and also League of Korean Americans and the Korean American Senior Center of Howard County for all support our events in different ways. And I would also like to take time to thank our candidates. So how are you doing, guys? Yeah? So I know you guys have been really, really busy, right? So constantly working, waving and acting as thousands of people and coming to millions of forums, especially this month. So thank you so much for stepping up and serve our community. And it's only one month to go, so the luck, okay? I guess it's almost over. Great. Okay, so we have a very tight schedule and I'm going to pass the mic to Young.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just let them say that we're taking the same things this morning in the county of Nassau. Thank you for participating in this process. I also want to say that I didn't say earlier, we are here today as citizens of the United States in Howard County to participate in our civic duty. Not to vote, but we are going to the board's vote. It changes every day. This is a wonderful thing, but sometimes we know the names or we don't feel that familiar basis. We don't know what they're standing for. So this is a great opportunity for us to kind of get to know. As I want to tell you this morning, we have the seat for the registration form, which is good, isn't it? Really? Okay. So again, important day to remember November 6th, Tuesday. Let's get out and vote, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon, candidates. Thank you for coming here and good afternoon, everybody in the audience. Thank you for joining us as well. This is the second session for today's program, which is the forum with Board of Education candidates. And I see you all again. I was with you two weeks ago at Ron Robin and I was all rich of new idea, a dollar, a circle. Nice meeting you again. My name is Quay Zhao. I live in outer city in Howard County. And my son and I have been in Howard County for 17 years. I work for the local government, Howard County, one of the neighboring ones. And also I work for Howard County as front of the commission, as a leader for one of the commissions here in the county. And so I'd like to ask my colleague moderator to introduce himself.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Sung Lee. I am also going to be your moderator today. I am also a government body at the national level in Washington DC. I'm here to support this event again. And we really want to thank all of the candidates for coming, for you, audience, for attending. Because I think it's very important that you are here to know the answers for the future. So again, thank you for attending today. And with that said, I'd like to continue on with some questions directly coming from Loca and Kappa. And I'll hand the mic back over to Ms. Jean.
So these questions are asked on behalf of Kappa, Loca, Paye Chinese School, and the Chinese Language School of Columbia. So first question is, can you name a few issues that Asian community cares about? Please be specific.
I apologize, candidates. And those candidates just do not want to stay up for some reason. I don't know what it is. I apologize, we skipped one portion and we would like to go over the ground rules again. My apologies. So here are the ground rules. Each candidate will be allowed to have two-minute open statement. Questions related to the agency organization will be asked. Each candidate will be allowed one minute to respond to each question. Great questions for candidates will be submitted by the audience. Questions will be received if I can't help with any and will be asked by the forum moderators. Each candidate will be allowed one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will be allowed to represent a one-minute closing statement. Time limits will be strictly enforced. And lastly, the complete video of the forum will be recorded and made publicly before the forum after the forum is based on the news. And then my colleague here will talk to you later.
Thank you, Quay. And I'd like to read the rules for the audience. First, eating and drinking barriers are not prohibited. You know, prohibited, sorry about that. With the forum, I have to come here. Sorry. With the forum, this is session. Second, silence your voice. A phone call could be made in the hallway. Third, if you have to leave the conference room and you want to enter it, please wait until the candidate or the moderator finishes talking. The fourth question, please be a respectful listener. Staff will collect questions from the audience. Thank you.
And candidates, before we begin with the questions, we would like to give each one of you two minutes to your open statement. So we can start from the left to right. That's okay? All right? Right to the left for you.
안녕하세요. 네, 하오. And thank you, 감사합니다, for inviting us to be here. My name is Anita Prandey. I'm a teacher and I have been teaching for 28 years. I currently teach at Morgan State University in Baltimore. I have two girls. They are the reason I'm running. And of course, my mother. My mother was not allowed to go to school. She came from a small village in northern India. And so I'm the third girl to have a Western education in my family, the other two being my sisters. I have been arguing all along through my work on nonprofits, like the National Association for Blind andblind Educations and the Association for Childive Education International. And locally through also my role in starting the African American History Project, you know, now it's now the CPA. And on the cultural arts committees of my daughter's schools, that we need to include our children. And the first way to do that is to include their languages. I am very big about bringing Korean, Chinese, Arabic, Russian into our schools to be taught by community members. In fact, I train teachers all over the country to teach languages. And I know that, and research shows that when you teach languages, not only do you prepare our children for a global economy, you help our national security. And also, it helps them with their math and science because you're computing when you're translating between two languages. I saw that firsthand growing up in Africa, where I had to teach my mother English because we ended up in a country near South Africa, where people from all over the world were and I was an ESL student. And my mother asked me to teach her English and my scores went up in not only reading and English, but also math. So I can tell you firsthand, I will be fighting for languages, reading, and of course, the teachers and balancing the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm Robert Miller. I retired from teaching for 34 years in this county at elementary, middle, and high school level. My son and daughter attended ACPSS schools, kindergarten, 12th grade. And I have degrees in English Education and Psychology at the University of Manhattan College, Harvard. I think it's important for us to focus on the classroom and make sure that we're giving more time back to the instructors. We could do this by reducing the amount of time that we spend doing the standardized test. The teacher and administrative evaluation system is very hard to solve and not valid. And by screen lining processes coming down from the central office and giving teachers more time to provide one-on-one assistance, both to students that are struggling, but also to students for enrichment. I think it would make a huge difference in what we can do in terms of addressing the achievement gap. Another aspect of how we can address it goes towards equity. We can't really close the achievement gap until we close the opportunity gap. And if we have students that have, you know, some students who get tutoring and elder enrichment activities, and then other students don't have those opportunities, the gap will continue to widen. So we need to try and address those community resources, funding options, and retirees, high school students, all sorts of things. So those are a few things that I wanted to bring up. I'm Robert Miller. I'm endorsed by the Howard County Education Association. I really appreciate you coming out and giving us a raise in your vote. Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Cha Wu and I'm running for education. I think there's separate reasons because it won't provide a quality education for our kids in this county. I grew up from Tiananmen. I stayed on here for like 25 and then went to Singapore. And I got my PhD from University of Maryland, California. After graduation, I stayed in Montgomery County for a while. Then when I was thinking of my home, I moved to Howard County. I believe education is one reason a lot of people come to Howard County. I became an education advocate for the community. I testified in front of BOE several times in terms of the word language programs, school starting time, and really speaking, and some other issues. I even testified in front of the county council at 11:30 at night, talking about APA, talking about overcrowding issue. I believe engaging the citizen is a part of the community. Make sure this quality education and the quality of life is a part of the mind of our county council and board of education member. They should always take care of what we're looking for. I've been a board member for Congress Association and I've been trying to think about how we want to streamline education providing a quality service to our residents in Columbia. At the same time, I serve in Howard County, one Howard initiative. And I believe the diversity of the population and the diversity of the opinion in our audience, we together can make a better Howard County. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Mel. I moved here to the county about 28 years ago when I was in college. And I did that because I was studying economics and East Asian Studies and I got a job as an intern or co-op with the Department of Defense. So I worked for the government. And then I moved here permanently. I did my graduate work at George Washington University in East Asian Studies. But my work with the government, I did a lot of work with data analytics. I learned to look for discrepancies and problems and to be a problem solver and someone who figures out puzzles. So I really brought that into my work with the school system. And as my family grew, I left the government and I became a stay-at-home parent. And I gave up my career so that I could really invest in our community here and raise my children. And so I have found that that wasn't quite enough. So I got involved in the community and I started a nonprofit for stay-at-home parents. And then I ran a preschool. So today, I have worked in every level of education from preschool all the way up to my current job with the University of Maryland School of Medicine in their MD/PhD office, where we're training physician scientists. So I have a great deal of experience within the county. I was a PTA president. I did cultural arts. I ran big programs. But the most important thing I did is, as my children got older, I moved into the Community Advisory Council. And I know a number of you here in the room have been a part of those meetings, where we've taken community input and collaborated and built consensus and taken that back to the Board of Education. So I've testified to the Board of Education over 50 times with substantive, actionable change that they can enact. I've also worked on a lot of policy committees and a lot of policies that are important to you and your children. And I look forward to talking to you more. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Blaskop. I knew I wanted to be a teacher from 4th grade at St. John's. They don't want me to school. So I became one and I taught Howard County schools for 10 years. I had lots of jobs and my last job in the school system was Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I had a VAS degrees. I'm currently an adjunct professor at John Hopkins University. So what do I do with my time in the school system that I still think about? I created the Gifted and Talented Program, the elementary, middle, and high school level, for advocating for kids who needed more challenge and enrichment in their educational studies. I looked at the diversity in the population and I created the Atlas of International Student Services. And this is a group of our folks, translators, interpreters, guidance counselors, who helped parents and families who do not speak English as their first language navigate into the school system. Part of that program, I created a leadership program for those individual parents who are ready to become involved as leaderships and PTAs and as Citizens Advisory Council. One of my best times, yes, my fun times, is with Superintendent Cusson. We took a tour, actually a trip to South Korea to establish partnership schools in the southern part of South Korea for about like 10 days. It was one of the best things. I just found the little video that we had put together for that. It's a great, great, great memory. So I also, in my last six years, I was on loan to the Maryland State Department of Education. So I have experience from classroom teacher to leadership in the school system to a leadership in the Maryland State Department of Education. My whole focus is on children, kids first, kids only, and make sure that we provide the supportive resources so they can advance and do the best that they can. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, I'm Sabina Taut. I spent the better part of my life working in education. I went to undergrad at California Lutheran University for psychology and sociology. And then I went to Georgetown University to do social development of children. I did research on their development. I then worked at the Congressional Hunger Center, where I worked with homeless population. And then I went to Urban Institute doing research and working on policies to really connect with how things work on the ground and how that connects to policy work. And then went on to work at No Get Hungry, looking at child health and nutrition. And there, really focusing on how kids learn. And then I went on to work at the Great Myon Foundation, which is an organization that supports education across the country. I've also worked, so looking at professional development, how teachers are doing, how they learn best to teach our children, and curriculum reform, looking at how we can reform our curriculum, doing same-form math, doing different aspects of curriculum, how can we be the most effective in teaching. I also worked at the Columbia Foundation locally to understand how human services interacts and how our organizations, our community organizations, how they interact with the school system. And then I have Digital Health in Howard County, which is a program that looks at understanding all the different systems that exist within our county and how they're all interconnected, which gives you a sense of how the private sector and the public sector relate to education. I look forward to talking to you more. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Danny Mackey. I'm a recent graduate of the Howard County Public School System. I am a civil engineer, construction manager, and an education advocate. I'm running because I know we can do better on a lot of the issues that we talk about every day. I, like I said, a recent graduate of the system, but I've been running for the next generation of leadership in the Howard County Public School System. As many of you are aware, we have a serious overcrowding system problem here in the county. And we're going to have to be building a lot of schools there. So I'm out of this and I build very literally is what I do. I'm a construction manager of Baltimore City. I have expertise on capital budgets and managing the process of building $100 million structures. We need leadership who understands how to bring these large capital projects to fruition. My three campaign priorities are school safety, not just physically, but mental and emotional health as well, holistic health for our students, as well as combating the ongoing opioid epidemic in Howard County by making our schools better partners and educating our students in a more realistic manner. Secondly is equity, which is not just closing the achievement gap, but also challenging students who are academically excelling and continuing to give them opportunities to drive. Any approach to equity would be missing a critical part without increasing access to vocational opportunities for our students. So we need, we have a skills gap in our local economy. I witness it every day in the church. We need more tradespeople. We need to be giving opportunities for kids who don't want to go to college so that they can have productive lives, come back to Howard County and earn a living wage. Lastly is responsible budgeting and relationship building. While I'm the youngest candidate on this stage, I'm actually one of the most experienced candidates in advocating within the Howard County Public School System. And it's important to have people who have established relationships with people not only at central office, but in the community and a very local government. And we need to do a better job of tying the academic outcomes and social outcomes that we want to suit for our students, the value of dollars that we're spending that we know when we go through our budgeting iteration process that we're putting our money in value. My name is Danny Mackey. I'm endorsed by the Voice Ethics Fallon and the African American College in Howard County. It's now to the pleasure of being your lead today. I want the words picked for you.
So now that we are on track, again, candidates, we are going to have our Loca and Kappa presidents ask a few questions. Again, you will all have one minute. There's a strict time limit. So please do not make me cry in my own defense. All right? You will have somebody literally in front of you holding a sign, 30 seconds, one minute. And then after that, be in my girl chair. All right? Here we go. Richard, you want to throw a chair?
Okay. So can you name a few issues that Asian American cares about?
Certainly. So I think there's definitely a lot of ones. Obviously, we have a high Asian population in the Route 40 corridor in this area and the overcrowding situation is impacting the Asian community more than it's impacting the average Howard County. So I think that definitely in terms of redistricting and overcrowding, our Asian community has the best interest in what the Board of Education does to solve this problem. Beyond that, I know that Loca is always looking for leaders who are willing to make sure that Korean Americans are engaged in their local government, are voting. And I think that it's important to note, regardless of what groups we're talking about, the Chinese parents, Korean parents, community members, all the issues that apply to Howard County also apply to our Asian American communities. So whether it's the achievement gap, whether it's overcrowded schools, whether it is finding ways to more responsibly budget our money, these are issues that affect everybody, including the Asian American community. So I know there are some specific issues, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that all of these issues affect our Asian American communities.
So I am an Asian American. So Asian American parents, what do they want? Well, my parents left because they wanted to seek opportunities for us and they wanted us to have a quality education, which is why a lot of Asian parents move here. So we want a top education system. Our education system has fallen. For five years in a row, Maryland, we were the top. Now we are number six. That should concern you. So I would advocate to have more funds, which have been stripped from the school system at the national level and from the state level as well. It's not $100 million, we put it in privatization of education. $5.90 have gone into privatization of education. So that should concern you. The other thing is, of course, GT courses, having academic gifted courses, and having good courses in general, making sure that those opportunities exist for students. I think that concerns Asian parents. The arts, making sure that we have high-quality arts in the school system, instruments, and an ability to learn and have time for those things. And also, some of the other book clubs and coding and some of those things have been important to our school. And I also worked on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with Asian parents. Thank you.
The quality of our education programs in Howard County affects the quality of our life. So I thank Asians and all people in the county, one excellent school system. You came here, or you grew up here, or you were raised here for that particular purpose. In my experience, one of the things that I think is extremely important is not equality, but access to programming. And when many parents have come to me, many of them Asian, Asian families, is not ability to get into certain programs because of our limitation. That means we have to think differently, we have to program differently, we have to add things based upon what students and their families want. So it's a really critical thing. The other thing is that, one of the things I fall for is also the arts. Making sure, one example, that we had a dance program at every single high school. And every high school did, eventually got a dance student. And so we're very important about that. And the third thing is the use of our resources that we have, our budgets. We need to be very prudent about how we're using the dollars. We need to be focused on the dollars. And I want the dollars to go into the classroom, into the classroom to support the students and the teachers. Thank you.
Okay. So one of the first things that I thought of when I heard this question was actually an issue that Jean Shu brought up herself to the Community Advisory Council. And that is that we need, as a school system, to recognize the difficulty of our students integrating into the culture, the common culture that we see in American high schools. And how we don't want those Asian students to lose their heritage and just become Americanized. We need to be able to recognize and embrace both cultures and blend them. And I think that's an important one because it affects you as parents and as community members because you're representing that community. As well, I think we need to, I think to the Asian American community, I would say the proportional representation within staffing. Who in our leadership is Asian? Who in the administration is Asian? Which one of our teachers are Asian? We do not have adequate representation for the amount of population you have. And students will do better when they see teachers and educators that look like themselves. As well, when we talk about the achievement gap, we cannot just push the top down. We need to allow the ceiling to keep growing.
I think there are two sides. First side is very, it was a pattern. We don't want to be singled out as Asian Americans, just Americans. Or we don't want to be left out as well. We are part of the community and we just want to be for the others. So when you see other people, just the people, your neighbor, your friend, another student. For education, so I would say, it's really the quality education we want to provide. I think a lot of parents really have a passion for their children to grow up, probably better than themselves, either first generation or second generation. We want to provide not only GT program, quality GT program, but STEM education, but arts education. And we want a school system to be responsive to our parents. That's something I feel our schools sometimes not responsive. It's come back, we are left out sometimes. I don't feel that feeling. I just feel that feeling hurting us. I want to make sure we have a responsive feeling. Thank you.
Some of this will be repeating, but what I feel this as a teacher is there is an unusually high concern with quality of education we need at Asian American community. So it's something that we want for everybody to be very high. And so we need to be able to meet everybody's needs, each individual student's needs, both if they're struggling, but also on the high end, Miss Girlier, about making sure that the enrichment is there and the students are being challenged at the appropriate level for themselves. And the valuing of the arts, I know as a former band director, that valuing is evident in the quality of effort and achievements by many students in the Asian American community. Inclusiveness, having them, everybody feeling like they are included in what happens in our schools. And I need this out there, but thank you.
I have a family's granddaughter and I went to her birthday and when she was one, one year old, and she picked a pen and everybody was so excited because they said she has picked her career to become a teacher. But the point is that cultural adjustment is critical in the Korean American, Chinese American, and Indian American, and whatever is called Asian. We know that's a very broad region of the world. And so I know, for example, my mother and father were very particular. Nobody could get married until they got the highest degree possible. So I was practically handheld to get a PhD.
handheld to get a PhD and two master's degrees. I think we need to support our kids and make sure that, because, for example, there's a cultural divide. My daughter was invited out to homecoming by another student who had to hide from his family that he was inviting a girl out to homecoming. So this is the thing about, you know, you have to understand, the kids have to fit
63% people of color, there are Mexicans as well.
in. And I think that linguistic, like offering courses in language, because when my daughters
And one of the things we did was started the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Most of us were Chinese, we had other representatives as well.
could not stop speaking their languages, I wanted them to know Spanish and Hindi, and
But we were looking at what affects the community, and we met with Chinese parents, we met with
also now they're taking K-pop, so they want to learn Korean.
Korean parents, we met with Indian parents, and we looked at what their needs were.
But I want to make sure that they are offered these opportunities, so we can blend together
One of the things was that there was feeling buys, especially in the front office, and
and everybody knows the best, and thank you.
that was something we took to the administration and said, can we have training?
There is another two questions to you.
We looked at media center books, and we got a group of parents together and started to have books that looked like the students. So we had Chinese books, Korean books, Asian books, and other books as well to try and
What have you done in the past to benefit the Asian community?
work that. Now we're working with the teachers to see how can we incorporate that in the curriculum
If you are elected, how do you plan to serve the interests of the Asian community?
so that our Asian kids are seeing themselves in the curriculum. We're also wanting to do celebrations, making sure that the Chinese parents and the Asian
Please, please, specifically.
parents are being celebrated in their schools for their holidays, their other communities. What have I done for the Asian American community?
I mentioned a few of those supports of the Asian community, so just mentioned, it's
At our school, I go to Centennial, my kids go to Centennial Elementary School, and 45%
very, very important. Back in the early 2000s, we saw a large increase of Asians in our community.
of the population is Asian. So one of the things that we did...
And so that's why I started the Office of International Students Program, because I recognize that we need to support the transition of the students and the families into our school system. And that's been very, very beneficial. I'd like to expand it, I'd like to do more digital centers for that as well. The other thing is that making sure that the Asians felt welcoming into our school system through various ways, and that's part of the leadership program. We get people in positions so that people can see themselves in leadership positions in the school. Thirdly, I hired a lot of Asian Americans. We looked in the program, and the people who head up some of the programs were critical, making sure that, not just because they were Asian American, that's not it, it's because they had the credentials, but because we want to make sure that people could see in programs that there was leadership throughout the county. Thank you.
So one of the things that I really liked doing was, when the International Parent Leadership Program was having, was teaching parents like you how to engage with the school system, I went in as the Community Advisory Council Chairperson, and I taught them different ways to engage with the school system. So if you're not familiar with how to talk to the administration and how to give public forum and public testimony, then it's incumbent upon us that we help you do that. So that's something I've done. I taught first graders how to count to 10 in Chinese. You know, it's not a big deal, but it's always fun. In the College of Sun reading room at Swanfield Elementary, I brought in culturally diverse books about a decade ago, so that kids could not just see the standard Newberry award-winning books, but these great wonderful books that talk about other cultures. And as a Board of Education member, the number one thing I can do for you is I can listen. I can be accessible, and I can use my background in East Asian Studies to really take your advocacy to the next level.
I think the one very important advocacy for the Asian American community is to want the Lunar New Year celebration. And we've got 20% Asian Americans, and in the past, we celebrated many on the holiday, but Lunar New Year has never been one. And, but now they recognize that. I think it's a great effort, and a lot of family realize, it's a family tradition that is bound to family tradition, it's a culture that is bound to family tradition. I feel that strongly about that. Beyond that, I think it's really something for the Asian American, we are not on the table. I think by standing out on BOE, we'll be on the table, we'll make decisions, and we'll try to help every children in the company. What I'm trying to do, I would say, the world history and global culture should be introduced in our kind of, and I can see that very well. I also question a lot of people. Did you ever see a world map not manufactured in the United States, where China and Asia is in the center of the map? Not nobody has ever seen that. What an open perspective, new perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say that I did anything in particular for the Asian community, other than working with individual students, although I agree that more global perspective would certainly be important to our students. I can't say that I really did anything other than trying to use a variety of literature with my students. So, but it's something that I do feel strongly about. The, I've tried to develop a feeling of inclusiveness. And one thing I wanted to point out that I heard that I felt really a cool concept is diversity is being invited to the party, but inclusion is being invited to dance. And that's what I think, that's something that, as I talked to members of the Asian American community, not everyone has felt like they were invited in any team more than this county. Thank you.
I think one of the things that, we're not on the worry, our schools will not be monoligual. We will have messaging in Korean, Chinese, as soon as you walk in the door, you will see Korean. That means you are welcome. You will see Chinese, you will see Hindi, you will see Punjabi, just like when we walked into our community, I do a lot of that. First thing. Second thing, all our music and choir, I will seek to, and I will encourage, that they also include words, like, I mean, if you go to a holiday concert, if you have time to include English, and if you have time to include Hebrew, and maybe some Italian, and maybe a couple of African language, why can't you include a few words of Chinese, Korean, other languages? Doesn't it take a lot of creativity? The other thing I will make sure, and I'll continue to fight for, is I will identify grants we can go after to teach foreign languages in community camps at different schools, and make sure, for example, for example, though who is being taught at the Tap School Middle School, but if they're being charged $2,000 to use the facility, that's unconscionable. You should not be paying more than $100 to use our school facilities to teach languages that everybody can get to that. Thank you.
So, a couple of things. I'll touch, first, when Sabina was talking in the beginning about how arts education is very important to the Asian community, about, I don't know, eight or nine years ago now, on the Board of Education, we moved it to middle school level to make it impossible to take more than one art, whether it was a band, a choir, or a band, an orchestra. And I thought that was wrong, because as a student, I was very, I was benefited by being able to be vulnerable. And I actually, as a 10th grader in high school, fought that, got a petition together with several thousand signature cosiedors to the Board of Education. I lost that fight, but I did, I tried very hard. I communicated with Nando Woods Elementary School PTA parents who were facing changing demographics in their parental makeup, to try to find ways to better communicate with Asian parents, because many times the Asian community actually communicates on different phone apps that are used by the majority of PTAs. So finding ways to integrate them and find individuals in the PTAs who are willing to spread the message to individuals who are outside that normal level of communication. Beyond that, I've supported leaders who are supportive of creative and Chinese parents for a long time.
The third question from these organizations are, which, what role do you envision Asian Americans can play in Howard County?
No time to take notes.
What role do you envision Asian Americans can play in Howard County?
First, I think is critically important that the Asians feel included in all aspects of the school system. So they get the local level, including in the PTAs, including in making sure their voices are heard. It's very important to do that. When we move into the central office, like I said before, we have to make sure that our human resource department's aggressively looking at Asian talent to include, maybe as teachers, administrators, in all functions. We're the largest employer in Howard County of public school systems, so we need to look at that. It's just important that we don't see a separation, but we move toward unity. The idea of each group has specific traits and wonderful things about the culture, but when it comes to education, we need to have the voices of a particular group present from the classroom all the way through the Board of Education.
What roles do I see Asian Americans having in Howard County? I'm going to go with all of them. You can do any and all that you have an interest in doing. So I'd love to see you as teachers, I'd love to see you as principals, I'd love to see you in the administration. I'd love to first see you as voters. Collectively, take your voice and take it to the ballot halls, because that's where you're going to make the most impact. And how many of you have heard the music from Musical Hamilton? Anyone? So the music in Hamilton talks about having a seat at the table. That's the role I want for you. I want for you to be at the table with all of us.
For me, I would say, for one part of Asian Americans, one of Asian Americans, to be just, for the general population, we are not to be singled out, or we're not to be left out. That's something I really appreciate all the people with our community. So for the community member, we can make an important decision by voting for the block, or voting for people who share the same value. And for the community member, we want to sit on the table, talk about the issue, and then make decisions. We can reflect, so somebody can share together.
Being part of our school system with, as teachers, as administrators, would be a great contribution. We need to take a leadership in the county, and many are already doing that, but I think the example that so many Asian Americans that I have known, that I've seen, and taught and parents, have set such a great example for valuing academic performance and excellence. And that example for other students and for the community, I think, is very valuable. And their ability to teach others and set good examples. So those are roles that I think that they can take to move the whole community forward by setting those kind of examples and acting on them. Thank you.
My answer is what can we do? And what can we teach the community, and why can't we get more involved? I see here at the Korean American Senior Center in Howard County, I'd like to see our seniors involved. There is a growing divide in Howard County between the young and the old. I would like our seniors and our retired folks to help us in our schools, be part of security teams, be part of language teams, be part of cultural awareness, mental illness help for our students. Our students have a lot of anxiety. They can also show movies from home countries. In fact, the Howard County Library just informed me that you can show any movie, you just have to contact the hard desk at any library, and you bring a movie, or if they have it in file, you can showcase it. It's good for everybody, because you can practice your reading skills in telecation and poetry mode, but it's a great way to share cultures. And also, we can assist by getting involved in terms of mathematics. I talk about it in my latest book on Columbia University, which is also at the library, The Power of Math and Science in Asian Languages Intuitively. Thank you.
So I think step one to answering this question is first recognizing the incredible roles that the Asian American community already plays, not only in the school system, but in Howard County. I mean, right here under 40, we have over 1,000 Asian-owned businesses, and the road is named Korean Way. So I think it's important to recognize that the Asian American community is already contributing so much to Howard County. And when we talk about the need for diverse staff, and the need for increased Asian Americans in leadership, that's incumbent upon the school system to make that happen, because you are already here contributing. That is clear. You are already contributing economically, you're contributing to the success of the school system, and there is clearly systemic barriers to allowing Asian Americans to take on a bigger role in staffing our school system, and that is a problem that you can help us solve. I will act as a conduit to get your voices to the table, so that we can change that problem. Thank you.
I think the question was what role can Asians play? Any, any role. But we do have certain ways that we generally tend to play a role, right? We have, we're a quieter group of people, and I think one of the things we can do is really have our, the community at large, come and have our experience, our lived experience as Asians at the table, making decisions. Because when you can inform policy or decision with a lived experience, it's different, and policy is formed that way. I think the other thing you can do is, one of the things I see is, you know, parents volunteering. My kids are shy, and I've seen other Asian kids also be shy, and not raise their hand as much, and not be as vocal. And one of these parents can do is volunteer in their schools, be there, be present, role model, and so that they are feeling that bind, and feeling that from their parents, and seeing that, so they themselves can come out of their shell as well. Yeah, everywhere, everywhere, we should be everywhere.
Great, thank you, Ken. So, before I ask the questions to the audience, we received about 30 questions, and our, 30 questions. We give five seconds. I don't know if that's going to work, but we're trying to go through and go through the BMS in priority order. So I think the first one that came to us as a priority was, and here's a question. With the increase of school shooting incidents, what are your plans to promote mental health among students and ensure our students are prepared in such events? I can ask a question in a few seconds. With the increase of school shooting incidents, what are your plans to promote mental health among students and ensure our students are prepared in such an event? And I do have to hear one first. Thank you.
So the number one thing we need to do, I believe, for mental health is start at elementary school. We need to start giving our children supports for social and emotional learning, and digital citizenship, and anti-bullying lessons. And it needs to start when they're little, so that by the time they're in high school, and they may be having more destructive impulses, that they already know how to deal with it. They already know how to deal with the anxiety and the problems. So we absolutely need to roll this into our curriculum, and it needs to be an important part on day one. As well, how are the students going to be prepared? Right now, they're using a model, and I think we are moving towards the run high fight model, and I would hope, I would actually hope that we work more on prevention and have to do less about teaching how to respond in the event of that. But given that we do need to teach that, it needs to be part of their routine, and it needs to be a reaction, like an automatic reaction, not a, oh my God, what do I do?
First, we just increase mental health training for our teachers, and then we increase our mental health education for our children. I think there are two-fold. We need to focus on both of them. Make sure our kids feel they have been prepared in their disaster company, and they know how to handle that. And I think beyond that, beyond the mental health issue, we need to focus on, for example, the anti-bullying practice. Recently, I really involved the bullying issue at school, so students responded, complained to school, but the school never responded. Then he took a picture of the bully, and the school responded by discipline. I just feel it's...
that by the time they're in high school, and they may be having more destructive impulses, that they already know how to deal with it, they already know how to deal with the anxiety and the problems. So we absolutely need to roll this into our curriculum, and it needs to be an important part on day one. As well, how are the students going to be prepared? Right now, they're using a model, and I think we are moving towards the run high fight model, and I would hope, I would actually hope that we work more on prevention and have to do less about teaching how to respond in the event of that. But given that we do need to teach that, it needs to be part of their routine, and it needs to be a reaction, like an automatic reaction, not a, oh my god, what do I do?
First, we just increase mental health training for our teachers, and then we increase our mental health education for our children. I think there are two-fold, we need to focus both of them. Make sure our kids feel they have been prepared in their disaster company, and they know how to handle that. And I think beyond that, beyond the mental health issue, we need to focus on, for example, the anti-bullying practice. Recently, I got involved with bullying issue at school, so students responded, complained to school, but the school never responded. Then he took a picture of the bully, and the school responded by discipline. I just feel it's totally wrong. If our school were not able to respond to our children's need, then anything just talk, it's not concrete. And we need to have physical safety in schools as well. That kind of sense of safety can help our kids feel safe at school, though. I feel that's important.
Thank you. Mental health supports, as has been said, is very important in a number of ways. One thing the county is doing is trying to create more of what's referred to as distorted practices, when there are problems, to help solve them and bring people back into the learning communities. The county started a program of social workers, we now have three social workers in the county, Maranor, or something, and want to expand that program. Making it easy for students to report issues, whether or not they are bullying or safety-related issues, if they hear that, some awful things being planned, we need to make it easy and trusting relationships to report. Training is important, so that students, as well as the staff, know how to handle an emergency should it come up. And procedures, making, a couple of tragedies that occurred were because procedures weren't followed with students with special education and the like. Thank you very much.
I would say students are our best eyes and ears, and yet they're not involved in the decision-making of the schools. We need students' support and security teams, and I'm sure that Richard and Judy will agree with me. And we also need community support groups, like I was talking about earlier, they need to be part of ourself every school, because the more eyes and ears to have, the better. And the other thing is, of course, restorative justice, which is mentioned, and we should continue to make sure that, we should reach out to the kids who've been pushed out of our schools. I live next to a boy who was, well, a young man, who was removed from our schools because apparently he was selling drugs, and drug problems are in our schools, whether we deny it or not. The kids will tell us where the vaping is happening, where all the drug use is taking place, because we're a target, because we're a rich county. So we need to make sure that those kids are not neglected, because just a few weeks ago, we had fifteen police cars and army trucks and tankers pointed with machine guns at his door, he could have been shot. And he has anxiety. We need to reach out to these kids and really support them. Thank you.
Increased awareness around mental health and support is critical. I actually gave testimony on this over two years ago, because we have leaders in the Board of Education who are saying disparaging things about mental health, and I went there to correct them and share my own story. I suffer from anxiety and depression, I am medicated, and I go to therapy, and I tell you that at political risk myself, but to make the point that we need leaders who are willing to change the conversation on mental health. Having mental health problems is just like a sprain ankle, and when you talk to kids about it that way, they're way more willing to seek help, they're way more willing to open up to their educators and to each other. Prevention is critical on school shootings. The real school shooting threat is suicide by gun, we need to be bringing the sheriff's department and other experts into the schools to talk to parents about gun safety, about how they can keep their kids from getting hands on guns, so that there's no access to weaponry that could lead to these school shootings or the suicide by gun. We can make some common sense security improvements, but again, we need to change the conversation on mental health, we need leaders who are comfortable talking about it.
I think if you just go back to data and what works, after Parkland, 200 subject experts looked at school safety and found measures that would work, and that was mental health and relationship building, and that has to be a focus within our schools. And the new superintendent has made that a focus, but we need to craft circles, which is just a communal practice of each of the town with the students, and each student sharing their story and bringing their experience and building that relationship within the classroom and within the school community. One of the other things we know is that a shooter, a child, often tells another child that they're struggling, that something's about to happen, but that never makes it to an adult. So how do we strengthen those child-to-adult relationships within the school? Again, relationship building and communal building. Professional development for teachers, absolutely, we need to identify those. And then having some sort of, you know, we're looking at the new research coming out around Tai Chi, or yoga, or mindfulness. How can we bring that into the classroom, and even ten minutes every day changes the makeup? So how can we bring that into the school?
Once we make those schools physically safe from the outside in, we're important to do that. At the same time, it's important to create a safe and nurturing environment inside the schools. So as mentioned before, curriculum is very important, we start to add those pieces of our curriculum, from our pre-K all the way through to the high school. Voices together. It's important that we listen to student voices, the parent voices, and teacher voices, and by bringing people together purposeful ways and support, we can begin to build a level of support and trust with each other. Mental health support is critically important, we have psychologists, behavior specialists, PDW workers, there's a guidance counselors first, before we spend a lot more dollars, we need to talk to those folks and say, what works well? We gotta partner with the county, the social services, we have to partner with the, connect with the health department, so that we're fine. What I'm advocating for is responsive, very rapid responses for kids who have severe needs and are identified, they need help with their families and themselves. Thank you.
And the next question is APFO related. Be ready, candidates. And for audience, the APFO, which stands for, that's acronym, stands for Adequate Topic for Safety to Audience, that is the law for public schools and public roads, as my experience at the county employee. And let's start, let me read the question and start from Dr. Tower. The question is, what is currently being done to relieve overcrowding conditions in schools, and what is your future plan to improve it? Thank you.
Great, that's a great question. I think early this year, I tested money from county council, really on this year to APFO, and I just feel there's several issues, I even wrote an article on that, and there's so many issues that the county might, first, the school capacity is leading to high, and then it is working with the number of development in our country. And then second, my loophole there, so for example, if you have a BOE, which couldn't pass the test, after four years, it automatically passed the test, but that's wrong too. I just feel the important part is really have a conversation with the community with the BOE. So how many schools can we build when we build development? Right now, they're not doing that right, and that's a reason we've got, I'm balancing the population, where we see a lot of housing development, but you're not building schools. That's a really concerning. I feel our residents should come out and post their company's activity, county council, and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Currently, the Board of Education has not come up with a decision how to handle the overcrowding, and the next couple of weeks, we're gonna either have to decide to do something or leave it like it is, which would be a real problem, especially at Howard High, where they're at like 137% capacity. I can't say everything in a minute here that needs to be said, but the future, I think we need to do the redistricting, I think we need to look long-term as to what we need to do with programmatic options, look at which portals are aging out, just a lot of things taken into consideration, which schools are being built, and then make good decisions so we can use our present resources as well as Japan, that we need to make some adjustments to APFO, four years is really not enough, where people can build, you can't get schools up and running and paid for and planned in that amount of time, so we need to adjust for reality. We need to have more conversations between the board and county council and county executives. That's up. Thank you so much.
First thing we need to do is to make sure that developers pay a fair share, because they're not paying enough in builder fees, and that's why our schools are underfunded. So we need to make sure that happens. We also need to know more about residential versus commercial development, because I've been talking with all the candidates who are in the county council, and learning more about this, it's a very intricate and very complex thing, but it boils down to how much money we're generating in our county. Because the bottom line is that residential, the income or the profitability is higher in the turnaround, so most people are trying to undercut that, so we need to think about that. And make sure the zoning and planning community has community voices, and not just founder councils and politicians off there. But we really need to think about working in concert with county executive, county council, and fighting for increases in education, going to Annapolis. I have been to Annapolis, and I have argued and I have helped with at least a passage of one bill, namely the seal of identity receipt, to make sure that students in all Howard County schools, which has not been under books yet, but in Montgomery County that adopted it, will have an extra seal if they are recognized for speaking all these other languages on their transcripts. Thank you.
I've been to Annapolis, since I was in the George Tower Building, I've been to a lot of these places, and when I go, I don't argue, I advocate, and I think it's important to have leaders who can make collaborative relationships with everybody who's in government, whether they're Republicans or Democrats, because if there is no politics, there's no place for politics in our education system. That four-year waiting period in the APFO, which, I'll admit, and I think it's important to explain, is that if a school's overcrowded, a builder can not build, but four years later, no matter what happens, they get to go. The reason that it was put in there was so that the Board of Education can take those four years to adjust the boundary lines in that area, so that the school wouldn't be overcapacity when the development came on. There was never an expectation that we'd build a school in four years, it was allowed the Board of Education to make the necessary changes. And we need leaders who will make those changes, who will look, okay, we have a development coming on in five years in this area, let's adjust the boundary line now, and let people know where it's gonna be, and then two years before it ever goes to effect, the community will know when the boundary line is gonna change. Everyone's blood pressure will come down on redistricting if we do it more long-term and communicate our plans.
I think we need to make sure that the state legislative changes connect, that they're all going to be comparable to the county of our own. We haven't built schools in a really long time. If you look at when schools were being built from the sixties now, there's like, you know, spurts of school buildings, and then there's a huge gap. We haven't built schools, we need to build schools. We need to put that into our capital budget and prioritize that capital budget. So that's what we need to advocate for. In terms of planning, we are not doing long-term planning. Right now, we don't even know where the lines are, where my schools are taking, where the site is, where the transport starts, we're chosen, we need job lines to keep working, and then look at where the development's happening, and then build schools accordingly, so that we're not having to do these massive redistrictings, or redistricting over and over.
How do you think we have to overcome? First, you get to fill your schools, and we don't need to fill your schools with a need, you have to be financially prudent and responsible. We need to fill seats, which means you have to redistrict. The first thing we need to do is to make sure we establish a relationship with the school system's office of planning, with the county's office of planning, we gotta have that relationship. So we're in tangent, whatever they do, we have to receive, and what all the decisions we receive, you all have to take, because we're making those important decisions. The second thing is we need good data. We need good data, and I don't really think the data is as accurate as it could be to make those effective decisions. We need a long-range plan, a minimum of five years, and a development process, a six-stage process, with beginning funding and readiness, and the end stage is called transition, to help parents and families transition to the new schools. There's more info in more detail later on. So the idea is from readiness to transition is so critically important, and the Board of Education is gonna have to work with the communities, neighborhoods first, we start there, and make those tough decisions, because we have to fill the seats.
Our schools are so overcrowded, they're not safe, they're not equitable, and they're not financially responsible. We need to take steps to change that. How are we going to do that? We're gonna employ, I think we should employ a motto that I use at work now and before, trust but verify. Right now, we've got a lot of trusting and not a lot of verifying. The data doesn't support the system we have. So we need, I've heard from the community, particularly around the Centennial area, that we are undercounting the number of students coming out, and we're not doing good projections because of that. And this relates directly to APFO, that numbers we're giving to the county executive level and the county council are not correct. We are saying that if only .11 students are going to come out of a three-bedroom apartment, that doesn't make sense. Let's verify the data and base our decision based on tangible results that we can have at.
Thank you, candidates. Now, this question here is a bit long, again, so I'll read it twice for you, as you think, write it down here. Howard County is known for academic achievement, but there are schools that do not perform as well. For example, only 68% of students at Oakland Mills participated in SAT, whereas at Mary's Ridge, it was 88%. How do you plan on closing this evident educational gap? Again, Howard County is known for academic achievement, but there are schools that do not perform as well. For example, only 68% of students at Oakland Mills participated in the SAT, whereas at Mary's Ridge, it was 88%. How do you plan on closing this evident educational gap?
Two major approaches, one is what we can do during school day, and another is what we can do outside of school day. During school day, we have to make sure that students are getting one-on-one assistance when they need to, so if the class is going from chapter three to chapter four, that student, if they don't understand chapter three, they are getting what they need so that they will. So we need to prioritize that. In terms of outside of school, some students in the county get a lot of tutoring or enrichment opportunities, other students don't get those, and we need to do what we can to provide those opportunities, or else the gap will keep widening. Maybe we can use community, retirees, high school, students who are getting service hours, local nonprofits and organizations donating scholarships, maybe eventually we can get to the point financially, the school system can do some of that too, to try to make sure that everybody has the opportunities to succeed at the level of challenge they can be able to handle. So thank you.
I've read about issues pertaining to the achievement gap, and talked about them at conferences and other venues. To me, the difference boils down to language gaps and all income gaps. The students who bring down the test scores and contribute to the achievement gap are the ones who are typically on the free and reduced lunches, they're the ones who are the low-income families, they don't have the parent support, they don't have the funds for the PTA, they don't have necessarily the English skills, and our schools are not helping them in ways to make English easier. So if you're being tested in a language that you don't understand or you don't have the academic jargon, then you need to be able to learn the language using your home language as a prop. So I will be fighting for dual-language schools, because there's research that shows that two-way dual immersion is perfect for everybody, it's really a great way to increase the achievement with you statement gap. And also, to make sure that we diversify and redistrict in a way that the income is leveled, and so we have more of the students peer tutoring each other. Thank you.
John Roberts, Chief Justice Supreme Court, offered in a majority opinion on special education, but it's heard everywhere, that local jurisdictions, local schools owe students the right to be challenged in the light of their circumstances. So that means that no matter where you are on this academic achievement, you deserve to be challenged. Not only do you deserve it, but we constitutionally owe it. So this achievement gap, arguably, is affecting the very rights of these children. And so we need to engage communities who have been historically underserved by the education system, bring their voices to the table, but then inform us on how we can do a better job, because these disparities are really unreal. As a senior in high school, I aided in a 10th grade regular English class, and was astonished that these poor students and these students of color were being underserved by our school system. We can do better, and it's about allocating resources where the needs are, and engaging the communities who are affected to incorporate decision-making. Thank you.
So we go back to the data, what works, we look around the country, see where the opportunity gaps are closing and how they're closing. And the things that we've identified are, there's 22 studies that say universal pre-K, getting pre-K gets students to graduate college, improved test scores, has higher employability, higher wages. And then diversification of teachers, looking at, if you have a student, if you have a teacher that looks like a student, that closes the achievement gap, closes the opportunity gap. Curriculum, having the curriculum reflect the student, making it look like, you know, that it's engaging and reflecting, and part of that, their closer-like experience, is an effective way of doing it. And then having bias training, I think that affects everyone, especially with a student body that's 63%, kids of color. We need to understand differences among us, we need to understand our cultural and racial differences, and how do we engage with each other in a meaningful way? To make it the best and most, we know diversity adds to a completely different kind of solution, right? That's why America has been so successful, is because it brings all of us to the table to create solutions. That's why America has been so successful, is because it brings all of us to the table to create solutions.
The first thing we need to do is make sure we have a commitment from the Board of Education, a commitment from the superintendent staff, and the resources to do that, to say that we're going to address the achievement gap. It has to be consistent, it just can't be one year, one year out. The next thing is that, well, we look at how to change our thinking from outside in, type of direct it from inside out. What does that mean? It's a community-based type of approach. It's the community with those particular schools. We all know, all the research shows, that the reason why there's achievement gaps is based upon income. There are a higher number of families who are at a higher poverty level in Oakland Mills than there are in Mary's Ridge. It's honest, it's good, it is what the data is. So then what do we do? Then we have to look at equity, and we have to say, if we have a commitment, what are we going to do differently? We're going to differentiate how we support those schools to ensure that the kids get the level of support and academic interventions and help they need to be successful, whatever it may be, but it has to come from that school, from that community. And then the larger thing is how do we work together across the county so that Mary's Ridge families and parents are going to support what we do at Howard County?
This question speaks very directly to me. My children went to Swampville, Harper's Choice, and Wild Lake High Schools. They're considered some of the lowest-rated schools in the school system. But you know what? My kids have had phenomenal education there, and they have access and opportunities that you wouldn't believe. So first, we need to promote that. And I'm going to give you an example. 60% of all U.S. high schools offer any form of physics. Yet at Wild Lake High School, we have three collegiate-level physics classes. My child has taken so many that he no longer has any physics classes left to take. We just have to let people know that these opportunities are available. The next thing we need to do is make the resources that we give to the schools proportional to the need. If there is a greater need, then those schools should receive them. If those schools need additional teachers, they should receive them. If they need additional resources, physical materials, they should receive them. That's the first way we can overcome this achievement gap.
I feel the importance is really how can we provide the resources and opportunities to all the students in our community? When there's a need, how do we fill that need? And there are diverse student populations in different schools. How do we provide diverse resources based on their needs? How can we do that? Can we focus on that? Another point I would say is, how do we motivate our students to learn? It's a new era of education, and with the digital education as well. How do we make sure our kids go to school, they are interested in learning, they are interested in growth themselves, and find their interests? The last one I would say, the education is only part of the school's commitment. And what we can do is only part, school can do is only part. We need to get the family engaged, get the community engaged. That's a part, should be the solution of our problem. And if we're not focused on that, only focused on schools, so we're not able to win this, to close this achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you all, candidates. Before I read the next question, I would like to say when candidates were talking about APFO, that's ADFO, as again, it's growth management-related law for public facilities, including roads and schools. And the next question is, what is your view or position on school redistricting proposal to an average farm rate? Farm stands for free and reduce meal, of course, and across the school system. So I would like to read it again. What is your review position on school redistricting proposal to an average farm rate across the school system? And I would like to interject here as the moderator. This morning, with the session with the county council candidates, one of the questions from the audience was about section and focusing on the county, so I think that those two questions might be good. Thank you.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Oh, sure. What is your view or position on school redistricting proposal to an average farm free and reduce meal, of course, farm rate across the school system?
So if I understand the question correctly, something about what is my response to the proposal with respect to an average?
An average farm rate.
Average farm rate?
Yeah.
Average, okay.
Average farm rate.
So the farm refers to the free and reduced meal that I'm taking there. So, yes, my thinking on this is that, of course, we really need to think about diversifying across the board. And in a way that we don't have pockets of segregation, which is currently what's happening in our schools. So the farm kids, the farms, I mean, they're the schools that are generating the lowest test scores, which is how we're measuring achievement, and also they have some of the various resources in terms of PTA and things like that. So what I would like to see happen in addition to, I would like to see redistricting happen through open enrollment with a tax incentive offered primarily to the newcomers who are coming, most likely to be ready for change. I'd also like to see some satellite campuses being built. You know, there can be choices where we can reach out to, for example, landlords like the Miller Brothers and others, who might be willing to donate, or maybe even some developers, and go with the flow and see if we can think about pathways for our schools in terms of the bus lines and things of that nature. Thank you.
I think that, I haven't seen a specific proposal that just says average farm rate. So that's, so it's one of many priorities. So just to get the correct information out there, there was never a thing that said the only thing we're going to do is average farm rate. It is one of many priorities, keeping it together. Diversity of every socioeconomic diversity, you name it, there's other transportation times. I mean, our policy's got led to 16 different things. I think it's 16 metrics for what we're supposed to balance when we are doing redistricting. So when we're doing these things, I absolutely think that it should be one of the priorities that we look at, because we know that when we concentrate farm students, the school performance suffers. And when there's better balance, everyone's performance increases. So I don't think it's the only thing we talk about, but as a part of the conversation, absolutely.
So, yeah, I agree. I think it has to be part of the conversation to do that. There is really, to balance out farms across the county if they're possible, you'd have to ask these travels, and their after-school activities would be impacted, how what they could do with resources would be impacted. I think there is ways to do it, there are ways to do it. One of the things that I've worked on is looking at with the Columbia Housing Center, and making sure that our housing, we're looking at housing, and how it becomes so segregated, making sure that we don't continue to be segregated, and how we can approach those incentives or solutions to make that a better integrated community. And the other thing is having academies, not magnet academies, but academies, where you have programming in certain schools that have capacity, and then having open enrollment for those schools come to the open. And I think that would also help with reducing or balancing some of the farms' farm rates.
Sabina said, first, our policy is very comprehensive, we need to look at all those data points, not just farms. So it's not just going to be basic on farms. One of the things is looking at how do we attract parents, and how do we attract other parents into schools? Sabina also mentioned, I call it signature programs. First, it's very important that we keep access and equity of our curriculum for all of our schools. I'm going to support the magnet program, not even a school. A way to look at signature programs are an outgrowth of a particular area of interest by some students. Real languages is a particular example, I could be a part of it in a particular high school or a particular region. But more importantly, what I'm going to challenge you, and I challenge the Hispanic Colecciones group, I'm going to expand all the organizations in this county, we need to come together as a community, as a Howard County community. Instead of looking in from diverse viewpoints, we need to bring us together and say, let's work together to figure out how we're going to make our schools great. Not just the schools in the western zone, but all schools in the county. So I think on the board, we can encourage this type of idea, probably bring the communities together and start a really serious battle.
Two and a half years ago, I was the only candidate up here that actually sat on that redistricting policy review committee. So it's called Policy 6010, and it sets out all the criteria. And the number one thing that we emphasize when reviewing and remaking that policy is that it needs to be balanced. And there's three main categories. They are financially and logistics, and socioeconomic, and that's where it includes farms. And then the third one was neighborhood fees. And so the most important thing was that we were building diverse and inclusive schools, but it wasn't just, okay, we're only going to focus on capacity, and we're only going to fill seats, because we know that neighborhoods are important to you. But we also know that social economics are important too, and not creating pockets of English-language learners, and not creating pockets of poverty. And so what we can do is balance things. And that's what I would ask that you advocate for as a community, for balance.
I think this is directly come to the overcrowding to the redistricting process last year. And I tried to apply for the ACD committee, and fortunately, I was not admitted. Otherwise, I think I would be blamed by many people. And so I would say, it's difficult. And socioeconomic, that'd be a factor in the redistricting consideration. There are 13 criteria diversity is considered for moving programs around. I really liked the way it said, citizens are not a problem. And how do we feed our students and the community together? How do we consider socioeconomic dynamics exactly should be considered in the whole picture? We need to assign a weight to each criteria. For example, some way we may feel more important, maybe 10%, others maybe 5%. Feel the objective function mathematically. Make sure we have a process, people feel their consideration will be included, not just one factor, count everything else. And that's something we need to consider. Make sure the data is right and the process is compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the balancing demographic to a point is very valuable, and in certain instances, it should be weighted, get more weight than the other criteria. But it depends, there's an art to doing this. So you start with data, which is great, but there's a tipping point, I think, that you can get to where schools get too extreme. And once they get there, there's important not to, because there, I think, and there's a lot of research to show, it gets too far past that tipping point, you are negatively affecting education on both directions. So I think it should get some weight, but it is one of many, and they all need to be looked at, and they need to be looked at artfully. Communities, we talk about communities, we need to talk about what is a community? You know, is it geographic, is it elementary school, high school? You know, there's so many aspects that it's not a cut-and-dry decision. But there is a lot of research to show the balancing demographics is important. Perception of communities.
Thank you, candidates. I think Mr. Miller was scared he was going to throw a chair. So thank you for stopping, sir.
I know, I feel like the text, I think, like time to like finish up.
And then he'll throw a chair.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Right. It seems that we have a lot of ongoing issues with Howard County. Make sure we're not going to move to Montgomery County, huh? Hey, 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 I like that. Thank you, anyway, all right.
Do you try to?
Absolutely, sir, absolutely. Okay, all right. So a follow-on question that regards to diversity, right? We all know the achievement gap between Asian-American students and students from other ethnic groups. Other ethnic groups. How are you going to address this issue so Howard County as a whole can have a better future? Again, the question is, we all know the achievement gap between Asian-American students and students from other ethnic groups. How are you going to address this issue so Howard County as a whole can have a better future? Okay, so it's similar to the previous question, but I'd say that, and referencing back to the Supreme Court opinion, I reference that we owe all children the right to be challenged by those circumstances, is that we have some very high academically-academically-academy students, and we have some very low academically-academy students. And while we, as a board, do need to focus heavily on getting those low-academy students to a point where they're succeeding, because we know that those, like the 7% of kids who don't graduate to Howard County over the school system is the overall rate, they become a problem for society forever, right? They can't live the productive life, they are underemployed, they need to be in affordable housing. So if we close up this gap in the school system, it actually makes the burden on the government and on society better down the road. But at the same time, we need to continue to challenge our highly academically-academy students. We have great AP programs within Howard County, we have great JT programs, and we cannot let our focus on the bottom have in any way negatively affect the students who are highly academically-academy. So we need to be, as an engineer, all I do all day, every day, is take very complex problems and boil them down into digestible solutions, and that is what this achievement gap really is.
I think I'm going to change the frame of question in a different way. Rather than saying large groups of people are doing really well, and large groups of people are not doing really well, I'm going to say, let's just take whoever is doing really well and whoever is not. How do we close the opportunity gap? And I think that goes back to the question you asked earlier, is, you know, what, what do we do to close the opportunity gap? And again, we go back to the data. So universal pre-K, having diversified teaching and teachers, having teachers look like students, having curriculum that's engaging and reflective, and works, and having app-based bias training, and having linguistic programs like Hispanic liaison and programs too. I think we have to address the situation and the problem based on what it is, and looking database solutions to figure out what those are going to be.
I think the thing I want to put out is that, we don't want to take away, we want to add to. But let's not say we got to take something away from kids who are doing really well. And when I was a assistant superintendent, I fought very hard to maintain the funding for those academic programs. That's at, how do we get more kids? When I got back from Korea, the visit to Korea, what amazed me is number one was the value of education, it was astonishing, and how teachers were held such high esteem. Number two, I was getting to go to all-day school with my fellow students, and they had after-school programs, and then they had on-saturday programs, and so forth. So why don't we learn from that and try to replicate that by giving different supports to end communities that don't have that structure? Let's take what works well in communities and transfer that with support. That's my.
One of the ways that we can reframe this question is to realize that not everyone is destined to take an AP course. It's like in gymnastics, when you see someone on a balance beam, there are people that can walk on a balance beam, but not everyone can do a rack-off that handspring on a balance beam. And we shouldn't expect everyone to. So what we need to do is make sure that there are equitable access to appropriate coursework for all our students. And that includes vocational education, and not just in the programs we have now. We need to make culinary arts available, we need to make carpentry available, masonry, plumbing, all of those things. Build that in. And remember, it's like running a footrace. If you're behind in the footrace, you're not going to overtake the person in front of you by slowing down. You need to speed up. And let's find ways to encourage our children who are on that lower end to speed up.
I think this question come back, how do we learn from each other group? And we have a diverse community, and academic achievement is just a part of that achievement. And we're going to just focus on academic, but there's some other, every student have their own interests and have their own potential. How do we help them grow that potential? That's something we should think about. How can we motivate each student to achieve their potential? That's something we should look at that. Instead, lump everything together and try to look at the difference. You will always find difference by different criteria, by different objectives. How do we actually look at the student, is it individual student, to meet their need, to motivate them to learn, and get what they can be? That's something I should, I think, we need to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are historical and cultural reasons that have produced some of these differences, and we, as educators, as school systems, need to find ways to compensate for that. As a teacher, I can be teaching, and there could be, you know, a whole bunch of students in the room, and some of them may be motivated and others may not be motivated. It's not just a matter of being able to motivate students, but doing what it takes for the students to want to be motivated themselves. And we need to figure that out, and we need to challenge each individual student, taking where we're at, and give them what they need, be that if they can handle, depending on whichever end of the spectrum they're at. We need to give them these opportunities, we talked about earlier. We also need to give them the opportunity to pursue their passions. And not every student may have highly academic-oriented passions, and others may, but we want to provide them with the best academic experiences possible. That's it. Thank you.
Our category is a suspect. We have race and ethnicity conflated. A lot of us kids are multiple, they have multiple affiliations. For example, I mean, I'm an American, but I have, I learned Spanish. For example, I mean, I'm an American, but I have, I learned Spanish from five-year-old. I have an allegiance to, you know, multiple continents. And of course, I had the benefit of growing up in 10 different places. So we have a lot of students like that, a lot of families like that. That is the quintessential American. So instead of worrying about the categories and how that has spawned differences, let's not harp on that. Let's focus on bridging those. And the way to bridge those is to make sure that our students get the language help that they need with community partners, with the elderly, cross-age language generational divides broken down, and support systems. And also, we need to help each other. Our businesses are fueled by low-income families. Just do your research, you will see that. If we want the best for our children, we should want the best for them. When we benefit, they benefit. We have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, for your very professional and thorough answers to the audience questions. And audience, thank you so much for your terrific and excellent answers as well. The next question is, let's start from a student vacation. What changes would you make to teacher training and certification process to ensure that we bring on the best and brightest teachers to our county? Oh, she, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes, you start. Yes, yes, you're off. Thank you.
So how do we train, how do we do professional development better?
There are so many things that we can do better. One of the things we're facing in our society right now is health. We have three times the suicide rates. And we have anxiety and depression. That's an, we haven't seen this kind of mental health problem at all. So one of the things we need to do is train our teachers to have, I get be able to identify these and to be able to deal with them. Not only amongst them, not only with their students, but also with themselves. There's so many, there's special ed. There is having bias training, making sure that they're culturally aware when they're walking into a classroom. We have a 63% student body of color, and we have 75% teaching force that's white. So do they have the cultural awareness? Making sure that our teaching force have that. And this is what we do. So we look at so many different ways to do it. Our math teachers need to be better prepared and have different models of math curriculum and training. There's a lot.
My first challenge is that the majority of teachers are, we get from out of state. Maryland does not produce enough teachers in the state to fill the needs. That's a big challenge for us. Most of our teachers come from Southern Pennsylvania. But how do we do that? First of all, I can look at university partnerships. It's critically if we start partnering with key universities within the state to making sure that we, they can provide specialized programming and support for our teachers, what we need, that helps us to become better prepared. And that's up for us to do as partnerships. The second thing is professional development. Our current professional development is very challenging with the limited amount of time that we have. So I'd like to move more toward more high-tech type of things, more online type of professional training. And we need to really accelerate that so teachers can have, probably set up access to little modules to help them better prepare with the lessons each day. Thank you.
Can I actually let me read the question again so that I make sure that I'm answering the correct question? Can you read the question again so that I make sure I'm answering the correct question? Teacher training and certification, then higher.
So let's take a step back and realize that there's teacher training within the schools, and that's called professional development. And we have an existing system, and that's actually why your children have so many days off school. It's a little bit hard for our families because there are so many professional development days. But we need to continue that in order to make sure that our teachers are up to date and practicing what's called best practices. And we need to give them time to talk to each other, to collaborate, to build. But more importantly, we need to pay our teachers what they're worth. And we currently don't do that. We pay what we need to hire them. And it's also why we lose a lot of teachers, great teachers. Once they start in the system, they often find there's more lucrative careers. So until we value the profession of teaching, we will never have the best and the brightest in it. And we value that by paying more whenever we can.
Firstly, we need to examine our recruiting process. I think a large parent probably never heard about it. When several companies come out and recruit, our company is the last to give out offers. So many parents, many teachers who are used to this, actually they go to Montgomery County or Barton County. Because our offer letter just goes to them too late. So that's a considerable, I think, for many of them. And then we need to really examine the priorities of our education training. So the education is a dynamic, it keeps changing. How do we make sure our working force, teachers, actually adapt and change? The school need to pay attention to that. Look at the research and make sure they're aware of that. And the professional training is something important. We want to make sure the teacher feel proud to be a teacher in the classroom. And whenever we pay our teachers, I feel, look at the data. Our average salary is only to local teacher. Out of 10 years, I feel the salaries comparable to neighboring country. Just look it up. And we need to raise our salary, the average salary really. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm still not sure I totally understand what the question's after because the training that goes on in the colleges isn't really determined by Board of Education, although Board of Education can have some input that might be listened to by the people that make those decisions. So I'm gonna talk a lot about that. In terms of recruitment, very important. We need to go out and search for, you know, the top teachers. But know what, you know, prioritize what makes great teachers. And, you know, and talk to the college professor, talk to the people that their student teaching with, and, you know, and see who's doing a great job. Yes, we need to pay more so we keep great people in the profession. We should be able to offer more open contracts so that when we know someone's great, we want them, that we can hold on to them. And that takes a certain amount of money to know that we can guarantee them that position. Then we need to retain our teachers. And that's all. Thank you.
First, we need to pay our teachers more. I, with a PhD and two master's degrees, still, and after 18 years of teaching in Maryland, still make five figures in a six-figure neighborhood. I was making $100,000 18 years ago, working for HP and so on, all along. But the truth is, we need to increase that. We can have a merit pay increase determined not by test scores. That's the first thing we can do. The other thing is, before the Korean Commission even increases the salaries to up to 10% in the next three years, we can explore ways to increase the salary on our own even more rapidly. The other thing is eliminate barriers. There are a lot of community members who are teachers, but they are not allowed to teach in our school system because of the barriers for praxis. And all these tests that we impose and say, your degree is not good enough for our schools. We need to change that. I'm going to make sure that I fight for that in state of Maryland and also in our schools. We should welcome Korean qualifications, Chinese, and work with these folks to help them bridge the linguistic divide. Thank you.
So first, this has been mentioned. We put our offers out way later in the surrounding jurisdictions. So we need to be putting offers out to high-quality staff really so that they're saying yes to us and getting a contract with us before Montgomery County or any of our competitors and on staffing. So we need to be out ahead of them. I'm not gonna stand up here and promise you that I'm gonna increase teacher salaries. I can't tell you that in good conscience. It's irresponsible for someone else to go up here and do that. It's outside of our purview. But what we can do, just throw our weight around as the Board of Education and tell an appleist that we want them to give us more money so that we can do that, right? So we can focus on what we can control and then advocate what we can't control. And we need to be in an appleist asking for more funding. But in terms of across the state, with a very high starting salary, we pay very competitively. But we as a community and a society need to have the conversation about paying teachers more. And that's something we can advocate on. We need professional development opportunities. The requests can come from the teachers. Like, their needs change day to day. And Bob Pitt, dead on, they need to have access to these modules at their fingertips so that as their needs change day to day, they can take the classes day to day.
Thank you, candidates. So this question earlier threw the kind of concept went off a little bit because it went to them instead of you guys. So I'm gonna ask you this question now.
How do they do?
A little unsure. But anyway, I'm gonna bring this topic up to you because it's a very sensitive topic. And I'm gonna try to repeat this as it's written. What are your thoughts? Or do you agree with transgender students competing in the opposite sex sports? And you envision a bathroom or locker room situation within public school?
Okay, first, the, I'm not gonna put too much attention on that and saying, trying to define who a child or who an individual are. So what I recommend is for the first issue is looking at bathrooms. As we redesign bathrooms and build new schools, let's look at private bathrooms. I'm talking about private individual bathrooms. Instead of getting into all this contention about that. So if all kids, all children, no matter who they are, can have a private facility to use. So that's what I would take so much. As far as sports, the, if students are able to play and they are identifying themselves in a way, then we have to look at that and saying, is that something we want to support? I would support, support that within the child. I'm not in the business of telling, identifying who a person is and what they are. I let them identify themselves.
Let's recognize that the suicide rate for transgender youth is phenomenally high. That over 50% of all transgender youth attempt suicide. The rate of depression is phenomenal. We need to be supporting these students who are so vulnerable and so misunderstood in our community. And the way we do that is by not segregating them, not isolating them, but including them in things where they're capable of being included. And that includes sports. Sports, particularly, one of the fear is that someone who is biologically born male and competes in a female sport has an undue ability to compete in that sport. And I'll let you know that the medication that those individuals take actually decreases their muscle mass. So there is no unfair competition that's actually happening. They need to be included and engaged and welcomed in our communities.
I believe we should be very inclusive and make sure every student feel comfortable to be themselves. And we should single out any individual student group and then say, if you have specific policies in view. And we just make sure not only transgender students feel safe and/or feel comfortable with themselves, every adolescent has a safe area and they feel included and feel comfortable in the community. And don't single out any individual student or individual group. Instead, treat every student with respect and have an open mind, talk about issues and questions. And then we'll eventually find our solution for the community to them. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't really have a lot to add. Yes, I think they should be able to use the restroom of their choice. Yes, I think they should be able to play the sports of their choice. On the other hand, what I would encourage is more inclusiveness, more education of everybody, all sorts of different types of diversity and how we can appreciate, understand, and learn from, you know, all sorts of different types of people. But my, my kid went to Bryant Woods Elementary, Wadlake Middle, Wadlake High, and had a great diverse experiences. Finding out that there are lots of great people with all sorts of different backgrounds and persuasions and everything. And they just bring different things to the table, and they're still awesome people. And I, you know, that's something I would like all of our students to cooperate with.
I was so happy when I went to Erickson Institute in Chicago and I saw everyone as a restroom owner, a picture of a toilet. And I said, I have to take a picture of this. Because this is what we need in our schools. We need just no designated, you know, single stall. Except for the new schools. And they possibly, as we expand existing schools, we can think about it, you know, as many as we can. But I would say, yes, we should be inclusive. And I say, let students decide if they even want to come out in the open and share their gender identity. That's up to them, you know? They're the bosses of themselves. Nobody else should be dictating this. And they should be allowed to participate in any sport that they want to. This is a free country, regardless of our, they just, or atheistic or non-atheistic values. In the schools, everybody's equal. And we need to remember that. Thank you.
I agree, there are some common sense things we can do infrastructureally moving forward. But in the meantime, top schools are certainly moving, whichever bathroom it chooses. With the bathroom issue, someone we said we get so hung up on. These transgender children are in environments that are not friendly to them, manifested in a 50% suicide rate. So we need to make sure that when they leave the bathroom going to the classroom, they're going and dealing with educators who understand, to be supportive of what they're going through, and children who understand what they're going through. These kids aren't scary, okay? They're people, just like you and me. And it's important to note that when Bob said, well, I'm not in the, I'm not in the business of defining people or telling people who they are. We need to, we need to encourage these children to learn about themselves and to lead the school system confident who they can be, regardless of their identity. And it's important to be supportive of these children. It doesn't mean wherever you fall politically, you can agree that we need to provide children, regardless of who they are, a supportive learning environment so that they can learn, so that they can be successful.
I agree with most of what my colleague said. I think it's moving forward. We can create bathrooms that are separate, like private stalls. But right now, as it stands, we need to provide, if a child is living their life as a girl or a boy, that they need to live their life in that extent possible and that we're not able to define who they are. And they should be allowed to use the bathrooms of choice. And it should be allowed to play the sports of their choice. And that we should be given care of and catering to these children with a wake-up. Imagine being the mother of a child who has 50% chance of committing suicide, taking their own life. That is a reality our parents face with. That's a hard reality to live. I think we make it easier on the parents and on the child.
Alright. Well, thank you very much, Kaz. We can all give him a big round of applause. That I think was handled well. Again, it comes number a little. So as we close up, we would like to give our candidates a quick one minute for your final closing thing. So, can I, Chris, would you grab a mic? Yep. Closing thing.
I'm Jen Mall. I'm running for Howard County Board of Education. I would like to have your support on November 6th. Some other people that are supporting me are the Howard County Education Association, the Educators Union. They've endorsed me. The NAACP Stronghold winner, they've endorsed me. The Hoco Indivisible. Lots of two other organizations. But what I want you to know is they've endorsed me because of my experience, my 20 years of advocating for children in our school system. And I can advocate for you and your children. And I'd like you to remember that. When we see four new board members in December, every single member of the Board of Education will be in their first term. There will be six collective years of experience. That's not much. You need people who can hit the ground running, who know all about policy, who know all about the budget, and have these deep institutional roots within our system that can really make things work and work for you and your children. I'm Jen Mall, and I'd like to have your vote.
My name is Chau. I would say that, oh, vote for, we'd vote for you. I would remember that. And I have some flyers and some of your signs you can take home. So we don't come out from the school boards really. We want to make sure we have quality education for our students and make sure we provide resources where the student need and find a way to ensure we continuously have the education as we have before. I heard about friends moving from Montgomery County to Howard County because we have better education. And I would hope that in five years, our students move out from Howard County to Montgomery as their own, regional kind of diverse education. Want to make sure, and our students, our children are our best asset in our life. Want to make sure we provide the resources they can achieve their greatest potential, have their own life. have their own life, enjoy their own life. And by running the quality education, I want to ensure that opportunity for our children. Make sure we together can change what we have right now. Thank you.
Hi, Robert Miller. Sometimes I'm asked why I wanted to run for the board and after retiring from 34 years of teaching in the school system. And after many years of sitting around at the lunch table talking about decisions that the Board of Education and other bodies have made and how it affects the classroom and thinking, you know, don't they see what this is going to do or what the unintended consequences of this is going to be? You know, I decided it's time to put my money where mine would not was. So I want to have that, get that perspective on the board of a teacher and, you know, to kind of filter those decisions through. We have a lot of challenges, economic, redistricting and all types of things that we're talking about today. I would like to be, try to be a help towards improving our school system. Again, I'm Robert Miller. I'm endorsed by the Howard County Education Association and I appreciate your consideration for your vote. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for inviting us. And my name is Anita Pradeh and I would be honored if you would support me. I would fight for diversification of our workforce. And I'm not talking about racially and culturally, but just making sure that we understand our students better. And also, we would, we want, we have teachers in our communities who can teach Korean, Chinese and maybe they have a language barrier like English. I will fight to make sure we have conduits to bridge those divides so we can get those teachers to work in our schools and not have to necessarily start looking elsewhere. Also, want to make sure that we have MOUs in place with historically black colleges and universities and even Hispanic serving institutions. Because we need to make sure that we're recruiting teachers and the best and the brightest. And right now, we only have agreements with Towson and Maryland for the field experiences of our students. That has to change. And I want to make sure that languages are central to our mission, reading and language goes hand in hand. So if you believe in teachers and are the only full-time teacher and teacher educator running, I hope you'll keep me in mind. Thank you.
My name is Danny Mackey. I remind everybody that if you want to know what someone is going to do for you as an elected official, you should look at what they did before they were ever a candidate. Three years ago, as a senior in college, I was driving back to the Board of Education multiple times a month to testify the importance of accountability and transparency during a time where our elected officials were not responsive to the community. I am the youngest candidate and one of the most experienced candidates in advocating for this school system. It's important, I have contextual knowledge, not only of the last several years, but I have an educational experience, page 12, I graduated from Wild Lake High School. And I also have the valuable experience of the last six years since I graduated high school to now about what the Howard County Public School System could have done better in order to prepare me as a young adult. And there's things like financial literacy and several other things that I've been working on. And I don't just talk about it, I do it. On financial literacy, I developed a program at Wild Lake to teach kids how to budget. On indoor air quality, I wrote legislation, went to Anaculous and testified on its behalf. My name is Danny Mackey. I'd be absolutely honored to have your support. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Sabina Taj. I've spent most of my life in education, doing educational work or supporting education for my jobs. And I think I have something to add. I have experience nationally that I could bring to the local level. And the other thing is, I believe that having a lived experience as an Asian American, as someone who is a woman of color, that I bring something to the table that's lacking. So I hope that you will support me and support my candidacy. I'm Sabina Taj. I've been endorsed by three organizations and also I've been endorsed by countless leaders from the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Glasscock and I'm running for the Board of Education. Think back about my 38 years of experience and if I had time, I'd do it again. So I want to take the time that I do have to really rededicate myself to the children in the school system. I have a four-year-old, 3K grandson is going to be entering the school system next year and I'm so concerned about him, but I'm concerned about all children. It's just that I want to make sure that we continue the excellence and quality we have in the school system and we bring our voices together and we come in unity, not just for our own children, our grandchildren, our neighbors' children, but for all the children in Howard County. So on November 6th, I ask for your vote and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
So your candidates, and lastly, just letting all of the audience here know, the names on the walls over there with their banners are the ones who sponsored this forum event. This is the first time that we're candidates sponsoring our forum to be here. Again, I'd like to give them all a big round of applause and say, Jen Mallon. The video that we do for the event will be out continuously on YouTube and Facebook. And before we close out for pizza and water, we would like to, oh, you guys are really excited there. All right. Before we close out, let's invite the presence of Kaffa Locust and Come For. Please pull out your raffle ticket because somebody's about to win $25 for Amazon. First number, 569-207. 569-207. One, one. Done. Next number. 569-212. Oh, there it is.
569-212?
Yes. I'm sorry? 202, I'm sorry. Good language, I'm sorry. Okay, one, one. Okay, 569-205. 569-205. 569-205. All right, next number. 569-239. 569-239. 569-239. All right. Another one. The game show, all right. Here we go. 569-241. Oh, there we go. All right. So we have session three coming up. We want to stick around for that one because that one's a raffle ticket for the Baltimore Ravens game, two free tickets, okay? Baltimore Ravens have supported us for the event, so we have, I actually